Good to have you here.
Good to see you, Bureau.
Yeah, do you care?
No, that's okay.
Um, you guys, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Um, it's okay if you keep eating while they're in the situation. Was there, hey Kathy, was there anybody else still out there?
Yeah, it's all these.
We're gonna try to go ahead and get started. So, um, last October, I had the opportunity to meet these gentlemen from my Nina's chair officer perspective. We got invited to go to Banjo. Their headquarters are in Park City, Utah. And, uh, we had a meeting with their CEO and, uh, Rich was president. We were introduced to Mike, who is, uh, sitting in the back of the room, available to answer any questions. And we were introduced to some technology that I like to call Big Brother. And, uh,
Not the intro I was looking for, but, okay.
This is revolutionary stuff. This is so, uh, wow. Uh, so having met them, I wanted to make sure, you know, Colorado, Colorado, I want to make sure we're one of the first states on the map that gets this tool available into our P staffs to help us best dispatch our resources to the immediate need. And these guys are doing some stuff that is just out of this world. Um, and that's all I'll say since I said Big Brother and all the scary things. Uh, this is Rich and I said Mike's in the back of the room and, uh, listen up people because this is some crazy cool technology.
Thank you for that intro. Thank you for hosting us here today. I appreciate it. So, um, I'm gonna tell you a little bit, a little bit about Banjo. Um, we're, we're also a sort of a different, uh, type of company and I'll, I'll kind of explain what I mean by that in a, in a second. We are pretty quiet heads down building out technology. We don't typically do this. We don't have sales or marketing. We, um, we're fortunate enough to be able to meet with, um, Monica and Nina and tell them about what we're doing and there's a lot of excitement. Working with, um, P staffs and first responders, uh, is something that, um, we think is a great application for our technology. And part of what we're doing is, um, we, we're working with, um, P staffs in order to be able to continue to innovate. So you start to see more of this in 2019 and, um, we plan to be in Colorado quite a bit as well, so it'll be a chance to follow up there. Banjo i- is about live intelligence. Um, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of explain what I mean by that in, in the next couple of minutes. But, you know, one of the things that's pretty important about, um, how we operate is that, um, we're, we're a company that has a, a mission. Lots of companies have mission statements. We have a mission and our mission is to use this technology to save lives and reduce suffering. And it, it comes from our founder, um, Damian, whose, uh, background, um, has been in the military with, uh, two tours in Iraq and then after that, uh, in the law enforcement space. And he got to see firsthand how technology, um, being a technologist himself, uh, is not being applied to the public sector and for public safety. And, um, he, he built the company around being able to take all of the AI, all of the technology that's been able to build and, and position it to be able to help, uh, folks. And so, um, part of what I'm telling you is, is, um, is sort of a realization of all of what we've been working on that space. So,
I have a question.
Yep.
Is the feed, is this the feed that's being sent out to everybody in the event where things happen?
I believe that, I believe it is flipped at their end.
Okay.
This is the first time I've used these cameras, so I don't know for sure, but I'm hoping that's not.
Someone on line, it's probably.
But I will send out the presentation afterwards if that's.
Yeah, I actually just have a, there's actually not much slide. I'm, I'm talking mostly, this is mostly to guide me. There's not much that's on the slides itself, so. So, you know, the idea is to be able to have that, better information so you can make better decisions. And so you saw in our first slide, we talked about live time. And, um, I think one of the really important things that I've learned, um, as I've been working on this project is that, um, we all talk about real time and real time is something that, um, really just represents the best that we can do at any particular point in time, right? We've had real time information, um, that comes to us and at one point in time, a day old team, but way more real time than the PDFs that we got on a weekly basis, right? And so, um, but as you know, live is only what's happening right now. When you're on the phone with someone, when you're, when you're, when you're talking to someone, this is live, right? And so being able to get live information to people is, is what makes a difference. Live is also important because as time evolves, the story changes, the facts evolve, sometimes intentionally, but most of the time unintentionally, just because it has to move from person to person or system to system. And so the ability to, to get live information and utilize it changes the way that we can make decisions. And so we focused our, our technology on being able to process live data. Now, and you, and you'll see what I mean by that. There's a lot of data, um, out there and, and, you know, a lot of, a lot of the data that's being generated is, is generated by different agencies. And they, they're generated for a particular purpose, for a different, a particular agency. But that data gets siloed within that agency and isn't necessarily available to everyone who can make use of it. It might not be something that, that matters at the same level to other agencies, but for example, um, having access to traffic cameras, public safety cameras, um, weather sensor information, video, um, these are all things that can help out as you're making decisions, um, uh, you know, whether it's, it's deploying resources into a particular place and having to understand, um, how many vehicles are involved in an accident, how many passengers are there. All of that information is available, but it's siloed off and not available at the time that you need it for the decisions you need to make. And so what we've done is we focus on being able to bring in all of that information into one system to be able to give you better intelligence about what's happening so you can make better decisions, um, around that. Does that make sense? So there's just some examples of, of the types of signals that we bring into our system. And, um, I'll talk a little bit more about what I mean by TLC here in a second. So this is kind of our, 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 our high level architecture slide that, um, I'll use to talk through kind of how the technology works. So when you, when you think about bringing in all of the different signals that are out there, it's a massive amount of data, right? If you think about all of the video that's out there, all of the, the crowdsourced data, if you think about WAVE and road sensor data from, from, um, the transportation authorities, you think about all of the social, um, information that's out there, all of the live video information that's out there. So we bring all of that in and we process it live, not in batches. We stream it through our system so that we can understand what's happening right now and detect it and then push it out to people who can do things with it, right? Our, our, in order to achieve our mission of being able to help people, we have to get that information in the hands of first responders so they have better intelligence to be able to go help people, right? We're, we're, we're not gonna be able to do that. We have to get that into your hands, into your first responder's hands. And so what we've done is we've split the globe into thirty-five billion polygons so that we, as the information comes in, we can understand, um, what's happening in a particular place. And so what we've done, every piece of data that comes in represents either an anomaly in our location, it's something that could, that could sense, that could indicate a possible anomaly, a possible event that requires attention, or it could, it could just be normal, right? And then it gets recalculated back into the statistical norm. But if we do sense an anomaly, what we do is we now listen for other signals so that we can give you more intelligence about what's happening there, right? And when you talk about artificial intelligence, everything is, is percentages and probabilities, right? And at the end of the day, um, the people looking at this data are not analysts, right? They're, 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 they may be, they may be people that are, um, uh, telecommunicators, they may be, um, operators, they may be, um, dispatchers, um, but they're not data analysts in most cases. And therefore what we have to do is we have to translate all of that AI actionable information. And so what we do is when we, when we hear something that isn't at a confidence level that should, that indicates, hey, we should go deploy resources. And by the way, every customer makes a decision on what that means in their own world. What we do is we listen for other signals. And again, you may find other signals that indicate things are happening, but they're not at the same, at a level that, that gives you that confidence level. But combined, because we've lowered our thresholds, we can understand what's happening now and then create an event signal, a categorized signal with a, with a confidence level, with context, and then push it out to you. And that's what this, the system does. So we take, we'll look at the video, we'll understand, you know, what's happening in there, um, what are the objects in there, what's the scene, right? A common, a common type of detection is fire detection, right? And, but that's just not good enough because you have to know what type of fire it is. So our system will understand, hey, is this a, a campfire? Is it a building fire, a car fire? Is it a forest fire? That's important, right? You're, now what we're doing is we're looking at it from multiple signals so we can try and understand, um, at what severity level it, it is. And all of that then gets pushed in, into what we, what we call our event detection system, which then categorizes that, um, so that you have, again, more context. Now, there's one, one problem here with this whole system when you get to that point. It could be a real event that's detected, but it might not be happening right now. It might be an event that's already in your system. It might be an event that's already in our system. So what we do is we use a system called multi-source validation. And this is what helps us make this data, um, actionable, uh, to you. When you think about data sources out there and, you know, um, I think when you think about, um, you know, something like Facebook, right? The reason there's a problem with knowing what's true and what's not true is because all of the data is coming from one single source. And what you have to do is you have to look at data across multiple sources in order to validate it, disparate sources that are unrelated so that the statistical chance of, of there being a correlation across them, um, is, is very low. And, and when you have multiple sources, you're able to increase your confidence level. If someone on WAVE reports a traffic accident, for example, um, there, we're, very well might be an accident, but it might be in the wrong location, it might be on the other side of the street, and, or there may be nothing at all, just hit the wrong button because they're driving. But now you, you correlate that with something that you, you signal that you see in a traffic camera, um, it, that may be a way to validate that and increase it. So this system here validates it across multiple sources, gives you the truth and the severity, and then it pushes it out to your platform. And, and that's how the system works to be able to, to give that information out to, to you to make it actionable. I know that's a lot. Any questions about that?
You said, how many polygons, about thirty-eight billion?
Thirty-five billion, yeah. Yeah, they're about a hundred meter by hundred meter type size.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah. Because what happens is, in, in our system actually goes to, to about the size of this room, but when you bring in data at such scale in order to understand kind of what's normal, that seems to be where there's critical massive data to be able to understand what's normal. Normal could be things, you know, like weather, it's different, there's a seasonality to what's normal in different areas. What's normal here is different than what's normal in San Francisco. So we have to understand that in order to be able to detect. Was, was our question on the phone? Yeah, it's a spaceship. So, you know, the, what I wanted to do is kind of leave you with, with this so you understand kind of what we do at a high level. And, um, what we'd like to do is if there's interest in learning more, I can come by and talk to you some more about it, give you a demo of how our system works, um, and involve you in, in sort of our process to, um, surface some of this information. We're now working with, um, I'm sorry, just, just a second. We're starting to work, um, with, um, several states on deploying this out in a way where we can, um, uh, solve specific problems that could have been identified in the states with the, with the technology. Go ahead.
How does it present itself?
It presents itself on the, in, in, in a couple of different ways, which are configurable by, um, the customer. The most common interface is a, a map interface with a side-by-side list view. So what you're doing is you're selecting the categories of events that you care about. And so, um, I was just, um, working, uh, with, um, with our Park City, with the, with the, with Park, the city of Park City, and they have Sundance coming up. And so they, they're removing all of the traffic alerts that are not, you know, that are just congestion because they expect congestion. So they, you, you select what categories you care about and, um, the severity levels you care about them, and that's what surfaces there. And it has a dashboard mode too, because you, some places want to put it up on a, on a screen just so they can see events as they happen.
So do you envision this more in like a, like an EOC application versus a P S A application?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, we, that's, that's kind of where, um, we started and we got a lot of interest for having that in P S apps as well. In some cases, the, um, EOCs are side-by-side with the P S apps. And so that's, that's sort of one of the places where the conversations, um, started. You know, in California, there's a lot of things going on with wildfires, which are a problem in, in a lot of places, as you know. And, and being able to have that situational intelligence is very important. You know, we, you guys were just talking about ESI now when I, when I walked in here, but just having the visibility of what's happening in other jurisdictions, because, um, in some cities, there may be several enforcement jurisdictions inside the same city. And so having those same CAD signals come into the, um, into here and surface events helps with, um, correlation as well.
So is this something that a coordinator at the, an intake person at the P S A sees a new event that they're not always on to, or is that a dispatcher would love to get more information about?
Yeah. It could be both, right? I mean, at the end of the day, the workflows and the, the P S apps that I've sat in are very different. And, um, and so, um, it can be used as an augmentation to get more information about an incident. And it could also be used to proactively, um, you know, push out resources. I've seen it mostly as phased approach where at first you, so you're sort of keeping it side-by-side and looking at what's happening and then bringing it together.
Can you provide some examples of the types of events that a P S A or EOC might be alerted to if they were using this type of service?
Yeah. It could be everything. So we, it's, there's over a thousand different categories, um, that we bring in, um, that we, that our AI has been trained on. And, um, you know, it, it could be everything from, um, you know, uh, fires, accidents, active shooters, um, the whole, the whole sort of gambit. We've actually taken, um, a step as we started, actually since we, since we chatted a, a month and a half ago, one of the, the things that we took on was being able to take the, the CAD nature calls and different, um, ten codes, eleven codes that are used across the different organizations we've been working with and mapping them together. Because as we brought the signals together from our system where we detected stuff and then from other CAD systems together, there was a real need to have it be in the same, uh, format and same, um, coding as the, the agency that was using it. And so that was one of the ways that we've done that. And we've started to increase the types of, um, categories that we've added.
Rich, are you allowed to share, um, the examples that, that Damian gave us about how impactful the use of AI is in time, in the time saving time?
Yeah. So, um, you know, um, yeah. And so there's a, there's a, there's a lot of, um, sort of examples, uh, different types of examples of, of how our system has detected, um, things, uh, very early when an event has happened. You know, one of them is very close to us because we have an office in Las Vegas, was when the shooting happened in Las Vegas. Our system actually picked it up, um, as the first volley of shots were being fired out because, um, the system detect, detected it across three different signals. And this was even before, um, there was, there was local intelligence about what was happening. And, and so the timeline of how that works, I may actually even have the timeline in here. Look here. Was that, um, there was someone, um, at a motel off the strip that was, uh, filming a Facebook Live video, um, just happened to be filming a Facebook Live video. And, um, in the background, um, was a Mandalay Bay. And they, when, when the shots fired out there, um, our system detected a possibility of, of, um, of, of, of shots being fired, um, in the background there. And the conversation that ensued in the comments was a signal to us that, hey, this could be a shooter situation. But there wasn't a confidence level. Social is a very unreliable signal, generally speaking, like less than five percent chances of anything in there. But what it did is it lowered our, our thresholds for all of our other signals. And so we were able to validate it, um, within thirty seconds through, um, the traffic cameras that are on the strip, as well as the social that was coming out of the concert that was happening there. And then we were able to push that out to, to our customers. And, um, you know, that was one of the incidents where after we were able to see that we were able to, to detect this, um, that, you know, we really, um, changed the way that we wanted to, uh, get the information out to people.
Do you use drones? How do you gather your data?
That's a great question. So what we do is we work with, uh, we, we bring in, um, all types of data, um, that are made available. And so, um, there's some data sources that we have are very localized, like the utility that, that's just localized to a few blocks. And there's other signals that are available on a, on a city, state, national level. You know, as we talk about fires, you know, we're, we're even bringing in satellite imagery to be able to understand size. So, um, it could be, uh, it can be a drone, um, if there's drone, a drone signal that's available and we can run AI on that.
No, do you use drones?
Oh, so, so, so we're not, we're not, we're not bringing, we're not creating the data sets, we're bringing in the data sets from other places. So if the city had drones, we could ingest the drone footage from the city. So, you know, that, that's, that's kind of a, you know, a one end of the spectrum, uh, of the types of incidents that we detect. On the other end of the spectrum, um, oftentimes, um, the detections that we have for, um, traffic incidents, a major traffic incident, um, fires are often, uh, before the nine-one-one calls are, are made. People are reporting them on social, through crowdsourced apps, um, and oftentimes with media included in them that can provide additional context. So when we provide that, um, to our customers, we can provide that context that can help, if nothing else, it can help you, um, potentially reduce the number of questions and the time that it takes for you to be able to dispatch the appropriate resources. We think that if, you know, and I, just from my own experience, I haven't sat in a Colorado P S A, but I've sat in a lot of them, a lot of time still goes into, um, ascertaining the location of an incident and, uh, understanding the severity of an incident. And so if we can help by reducing some of that time it takes to understand where this is happening, that can, that can increase the amount of time to be able to, um, get more information from the caller. And that's one of the ways that we can immediately help on a broader scale, um, for, for what's happening.
Is, is this whole processing capability installed within P S A or do you do it remotely and then transmit it out?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a web-based, um, interface. So it's a, it's a software as a service, um, and you access it through your browser. And so you don't have to host anything locally.
But then you're also pulling data from the P S A's CAD system.
That's right. That's right. Yep.
I'm kinda curious, I've been watching you guys for the past year or so. Who's been your traditional customer base and how long have you been in the public space?
Yeah. I'm not ready to talk about customers, um, uh, at, at this time, but, um, we've, you know, actually, but I, but, but to, to that point, I actually have a point to make around that because I think that's an important, um, aspect, especially when you're talking about this amount of data, um, that we have. We, we've been in the public safety space for, for a very short period of time. You know, when you talk about this type of technology, um, you know, it actually, um, it sounds like science fiction to most people who are talking about it. And so what we've done is we've been working, um, at building out this technology and validating it, right? And so how we validated the technology was, um, by being able to push out these data points, um, out to the media and as a news wire type of service so that they could break stories, um, using it. And when we got to the point where in Las Vegas, we, we were alerting, um, you know, K S N D, which was a customer of ours, I guess you had a customer for me, um, uh, before, before it was even, um, in the police system, um, that was an indicator to us that we need to, to figure out how to, um, get this information into the hands of first responders. One of the reasons that it, it took us, it's hard to go down that path is because whenever we had tried previously to provide this information, um, it automatically jumped into the surveillance spectrum. And, um, that's not what we're about. We're about telling you there's a fire, we're not about helping you, you know, necessarily identifying who started the fire, that's a different, um, type of, of problem statement. And so to that end, we've architected our system to not have personally identifiable information in it. So we filter that out, um, before it gets ingested into our system and therefore we don't even have that information of in there. All we have is there is an accident here, there's a fire here, um, there's a shooting, a potential shooting situation here, and that's what we push out.
Do our type of data so investigators wouldn't be able to go back and look at?
Yep.
One of the reasons it's, because like, somebody you're probably struggling on, it's like, well, why, why don't you just show us what you got? Right? Because remember, our, our mission is to say, well, we are very sensitive and very passionate about that and we want to make sure that it's done right. As Rich mentioned, the system has been in existence for numerous years and it's, uh, we are perfecting the technology now we are in the public sector. And it's, what you guys do is too important to have it half-baked. And when it's in an open meeting, an open environment like this, we want to make sure that the message is clear and not misconstrued. The big differentiators, like Rich said, is it's, it's in live time and happens fast. There's a lot of use cases. We'll be more than happy to show in, in a more secure environment, greater details about how that works. But just imagine the power of a dispatcher having even that much more information other than just a single call. And, uh, you know, I always, and I'm not a technologist, Rich is the, the brains of the operation. If we all have the luxury of time and had all this data spread out on a table, you could come to that conclusion. Sometimes it might take days, weeks, months. Well, now with the benefit of the artificial intelligence taking all these disparate data, it can come to that conclusion for you, but ultimately you get to make that decision within seconds, sometimes nanoseconds. And that's the power of the system. So we want to make sure, public safety is very important. We have a lot of projects going right now and we're, we're not trying to be cloak and dagger, but we want to make sure, you know, saving lives because we're just an instrument, we're just a tool for the first responder. We want to make sure it's absolutely right, but that's our, our bottom line. Uh, as Rich, I, I don't know if you mentioned, we don't have salespeople or marketing people. You go to our website and they're like, I don't get it.
Yeah, it's just stupid.
Yeah. So, I mean, and it's because we're focused on getting the technology right. And now we're focused on getting the technology into your hands and make sure it's in the right hand. And that, and that's a big, big factor for us. And, uh, the, the CEO and the founder is absolutely passionate. Rich won't mention it, but it's, they have the opportunities to make billions of dollars selling this off. And he said, absolutely not, this is my focus and my passion. And that's some of the reasons, like, people like myself who've been in the public sector, been in public safety said, you know what? It's too important, I'm, I want to try to help get it into your hands. It's, it's, it's amazing how this stuff works. It, um, you know, people do think there's, well, there's, there must be something, it's too good to be true, but we have, you know, multiple, multiple years of proof points. And as Rich mentioned, media's been using that, you heard it here first, live at five and all that kind of stuff. But now we want to get it to people that can actually do something about it. But it isn't, um, uh, Big Brother's Skynet where, uh, the machine just takes over and starts doing everything. It's not going to displace or replace people and the human thought and dispatcher saying, I understand that, but this is what I need to do.
And because I've actually, you know, because I've sat in, in so many of the, the different P S apps, uh, it's also why I'm very sensitive to how I answered your question because every workflow that I've seen is very different. It's optimized for a particular operation. And for me, when you have technology like this, it's, it's fairly useless and potentially a distraction if it's not integrated properly into the workflow. And it, it's important to me to understand in a particular place how it needs to be, how it can add value. You know, in some cases, you know, where EOCs are right next to P S apps, the information available in the different places is separate for a reason because it could be a distraction if it's not integrated in, in, in proper way. And so what we want to do is be able to bring it in, in a way that's additive so that it can help, it can provide more context in these types of incidents.
You know, and I probably, uh, did them a disservice by announcing them as a Big Brother kind of tool, but, so I apologize. But, but I think the thing that was so dramatic to me, and I know all of my P S A people in the room, were like, oh my God, another stream of information. But that's really what we are. We're aggregators of information to make a decision about what resources we need to send where, to what severity the incident is. And now there's AI that has been proven and the, the time factors are so dramatic. When Glenn and I put out the Mandalay Bay AR this, in the next couple of months, to you guys as after-action lessons learned, I mean, we're talking twenty, thirty minutes could have been saved. They have the information in thirty seconds. Law enforcement resources were sent to multiple properties to find out where the shooter was and they knew it in thirty seconds. So that was so actionable and they could have sent more directed resources to the right location in a much more, uh, efficient time window than what ultimately happened. And they, there are many examples that they have of how this artificial intelligence, it's not taking the decision-making ability out of the dispatcher or call takers of, out of their, uh, ownership.
Yeah.
But it's just giving them another tool. And, and let's just face it, you guys, Colorado, what do we have? Active shooters all the time. Active shooters all the time anymore. We're like famous for wildfires, like California, we're the number two state, I think in the Union, that has the most wildfires. And so when I saw this technology, I'm like, oh my gosh, we could use this to such great benefit to the public that we serve. And kudos to Damian for really not selling it to the alphabet soup federal government agencies that really, really, really would like to have it, you know, so.
Well, I get to your point. I mean, there's more to that. So you know, people think this is another thing for dispatchers, as with this type of system. Do all that work?
Right. Yeah, one little succinct picture, and then the dispatcher can make a decision. Oh, in my system, to Rich's point, in my system, I will send one fire truck and one ambulance, and I won't dispatch the whole, you know, fleet of fire apparatus. So it's again, it's a much more efficient use of our resources. And in today's day and age, you guys, we really have to be thinking that way, especially with limited budgets and resources.
But we're, we're, we're having support helps out from, from the local organizations is that it helps the sponsor getting some of these data sources. Like knowing that there's a power outage in an area that you're getting a call from might help you understand more context, for example. And if that's surfaced together, these are the types of things that, that can be helpful. And in the, in the case where there's an incident, you know, we talk about, you know, the, the folks right at the, at the area of the shooting, but also letting the hospitals know, not just the trauma center that people should go to, but the ones they could go to, right? And letting them know what's happening because again, seconds matter, not just in responding, but for helping as well. Sorry.
You're talking about different types of.
Over time. Sorry.
How do you, you're talking about the different types of information that you can be using and presenting. How do you organize that so that dispatcher can focus on what they need to?
We try to do it as succinctly as possible. And the idea is to be able to give you essentially a, an, an event alert that says, hey, this is happening. Here's a confidence level in it, it's met your threshold. So you set the rules for what shows up there and it'll, you know, it can show up in whichever, whatever format is best for your environment, whether it's a list or a map or a combination of the two. And then it has a workflow, it has a workflow that you can use to, you know, move the information around.
But for example, it's going to show a, some type of picture of a fire, so you fill in the size. How is, how is it known that that's what goes for the dispatcher? Do they have to pick from a list of items? Or does the artificial intelligence say this is what they need to do?
Yeah, when, when it detects, when we detect something, what we do is we, we share the sources of that with you. Not who did it necessarily, but what it is. So why did the system detect it? Because if you're making a decision on sending resources out, like you need to know why, why this is happening. Now, we've had some places where they want the supervisor or the, to, to be able to see that and other people not to see that. They just need to see that, that is something they need to act on. But I mean, the system allows you to see what, what caught, what, what drove that detection. I think I'm out of time, but I'm happy to come chat some more.
Yeah, if you want to follow up with you guys.
Yep.
I will share my contact info so that you.
So I have all of their contact info. I'll make sure Daryl has it, somebody puts out the information from this meeting. Because frankly, just like Rich said, they, they want to come into your space to see how your operations run so that they can show you how they could best fit into your, what your technology flows and the way your information presents. So it's not so obtrusive, right? Or disruptive in our workspace. Because when they came and talked to Dina, kudos to them for reaching out to an association and finding out how to enter our space. You know, we're like, oh my, so here's B Jameson here, you cannot give us more days. But anyway, that's why they want to have individual leads with you, because everybody's workspace is a little bit different.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Grab some food on the way to your plane.
I thought about it afterwards, I think you could probably dial into that, whatever meeting and present, share with that.
Yeah, I'm going to set this up different next time.
That's okay.
No, no.
No, I don't want to end the meeting. Long bud. First of all. I can tell. Okay.
Yeah.
Should I disconnect? Is it secret?
No, no, no. Project 43, D J.
Lowercase D J.
I don't think.
Let's see what it does.
Oh, no, apparently it's capital P.
Okay. Oops.
Forty, and then capital P J.
Don't say password and.
Perfect.
I need to change what's streaming out to people here.
Okay, so I'm just going to go ahead and just get us kicked off while Daryl gets that set up on the right screen for us. And I'm Damian Cooperhouse. Hello, for those of you that aren't here. For those of you that don't know me, I have been with Motorola for the last six months. Prior to that, I was on the other side, managing dispatch centers and dispatch centers for the last 22 years. So this is all new to me. But I felt that it was important that I share with you all some really cool things that Motorola is doing. So some of the things that we're working on and actually have in place is working on creating a, a great workflow for your dispatchers and call takers in the center. We want to offer you everything from the beginning of your 911 call, all the way to the completion of the, of the police officer's report records. And we're really working on that one workflow, eliminating five keyboards, three mice. And I can sit here and talk to y'all about it, but I'm going to show you a video because he does a much better job than I do at showing you what we have. And before I kick it off, I just want to introduce you all. Some of you may know Jose Crespo, who's our area sales manager. He covers the state of Colorado. So for any of you who need anything Motorola, Jose is here and available and super helpful. So I'm going to let the, the video speak for itself. If you guys have questions after, I'll let you know.
I don't, yeah, I don't think so. I don't think so. Yeah, it's just low.
Hmm.
Pretty familiar? Yeah, that is just rolling along, nice. And then that call time, puts the whole thing on the table. Anybody in the group not been there? No. Would you agree that every click counts? Would you agree that every second counts? Of course. The strongest, most efficient way that we can communicate is to. But how many data streams do you have available? The app. Do you know? Ready up? You're running in your head right now. You're nervous, running in your head right now. Because how do they work together? You stop right there when I said work together. Well, they don't, because they've got this one over here and this one over here, and not over there, it's working that one, and Bob will do what they. That's what we need to do. A C O, we all know A C O. They introduced a paper called Project 43. Project 43 outlined the goals for the future of emergency response and law enforcement. A C O understood that the amount of mass data that's coming in, compounding day by day for our centers, that we were going to have to do something to handle that. More data bad, not necessarily. We need to get this big data, right? But what we find out is, big data is great if you can understand and handle it. Big data is bad when it's coming in in twelve different locations, you don't know what's going on in front of you. Overwhelming, is kind of what I think about. What you're about to see, though, I want to be very clear, if you're about to see it not, what do you need to call? Not the user. What you're about to see is today's Motorola community. Welcome to our command center. This can go by many names. And you can hear it throughout classes, Command Center, R T C C, P S A Dispatch Center, Consultor, on and on and on and on and on. This therapy receives the call. Hey, Andrew. Pad. I think, I think, I do know. That's bad, we're worried. You said to yourself, oh, we don't, we don't see that, it's fine. Follow me through that. This can be seen with this many screens, many agencies I work with today, you actually need to set up this like this. Or it can be broken out. Depending on your agency. Non-quickie type. Custom for you. Now, some of this up here is familiar to you, right? You're looking at that, I'm already seeing heads going up. Yes, me too. Some of it, however, is not. Maping, bad, video feed, bad, radio. Everything is right here in one cohesive view. And you say, yeah, there are six screens, I don't call that a cohesive view. That's the only thing that's your instance, the guy who tells us 911 call phone. Oh, coming in, right? You just saw that. From via phone, from via text. How long they've been waiting? The grid is blinking, right? So let's get some more information on this, okay? We have information as who the caller is, where they called from, what they're calling about, what that whole case is. Most of you are still looking to the left, expecting you to do something. We've already done it. When that call came in, control, the pad, the mapping, they're cross-populated without you doing anything. They're all to each other. So let's get some more details here. What do we have? We've got a wreck, right? You guys watched the video. Blue two-door overturned vehicle, right? Uh-oh, they're popping out, don't worry. Notice the blue triangle, the little red triangle around it. Those are units we can dispatch, those are units that are available. We dispatch them. Location over here, that's the location of the incident itself. Can you see units around there right now? No, but we could if they were close, but we'll dispatch those out, won't we? Notice, as Andrew was saying earlier, there's only one map. And a lot of you are used to two maps, you used to a 911 map, you used to say, no longer necessary. No longer necessary. Why? Well, I would ask me a sentence, a question. One D, right? One is one cohesive view. So let's get a closer look at what just happened, because that happened so quickly, you want to make sure you saw it in real time. The CAD cross-populated with the notes, cross-populated with the sound. All the harm literally taken to the call. As you're typing in the data, it automatically cross-populates again. You go to another address, it doesn't move. You don't move it, you know what I'm saying? It moves on its own. There's no longer need to duplicate that work. All of this runs together, it saves so much time. So so far though, we would see phone calls, have phone calls and texts. Or we know about our eyewitnesses typically, we expect. Officers, how many times have we gone through that, purging and caudre? And the dog, you've been parking with the dog, right? Hold on there. Many times that eyewitness gave literally the word. How do I know that? Well, my name is Luke McTeal. I'm a retired detective, crime analyst, and SWAT one man from Metro Ohio area. And I currently work with Motorola, we keep on problems just like this. So I'd happily do that. Point note, before we move on, before we started this project and I was asked to do this, I said, that's fantastic. Everything that I show will happen to work. Everything we show will not be easy. Because I work every day and see these beautiful things working, I see these successes, and I say, that's where I want to go. Right? So if we get back to this now, thinking about that, all our witnesses, what do we need? Need eyes on. Well, how do we get eyes on? How do you get eyes on from a CAD screen or a map? No, that's the answer. However, as this was cross-populating across everything at the top, it was also populated and aware of situational awareness. As you can see, we have a list of calls. When I click on that particular call, because it's right here at the top, it brings up a camera icon. That's a local camera, it knows that's there already. When I click on that icon, do you see that it just popped up? We've got a highway, backup vehicles, smoke in the chat, and this is here. I'm going to save this. One click of a button, I'm going to save this to our secure cloud storage vault. And then we'll see you by vault. But I need to be closer because I can't see much there, right? The blue icons on the map represent officers that had started to arrive on scene. I'm going to ask one of those officers, who's a boy drone, yes, drones are E L A, I work with them now. He selects on that drone, immediately I have live drone footage. He's going to rotate that around a little bit, I can't see, I want to see this overturned vehicle, right overturned vehicle, remember that. It's not an overturned vehicle, it's an overturned tractor trailer. And it's leaking some fluid, but what kind of fluid is that? Well, the drone's getting moved in, and we have flashes 1203, flammable liquid. Say the situation is done from bad weather. Would you also say that it's not committed and bringing it to the room? However, what's not committed is the way this is working here. Yes, I've been talking to you and explaining it, but understanding, and I, I've counted these clicks, I've only done from the instant of 911, I've only done nine, not one. That's, that's what we're talking about. Simple scene, flipping, soaring, moving. Speaking about these cameras for a minute, because you know, I get to a lot of people I work with, they go, what are you doing? I shouldn't do it, he brought it. Traffic. Third-party business. I do three months in Detroit, the first example of that. Covert cameras. What do I need to write down on covert project into this live? Or perhaps cameras are all a visual on scene, that Andrew spoke. Anything that you have, you can put in here and make it, because you can do. Before we move on, officers in the room, if you're dispatched to an accident with a, was that a, a blue Honda that rolled over? And you roll in and you see that? Does the situation change? That does. Number one, you're probably not going to roll quite so. It says the fireman in the room, although he turned blue car. We don't want to do one of those.